You made it.
I know.
Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the Public Works Finance Committee meeting for November 13 of 2017. Attending today Gina Trusio and this just in.
Just in.
Kathryn Bonzo will be here and Gary Redden representing the city along with Sarah Banks doing the financial reports. The first thing on the agenda today is approval of the Public Works Finance Committee minutes from October 23rd. I entertain a motion to approve those.
So moved.
Second?
I guess we can approve those. They looked okay to me. I didn't see anything needed corrected. Number two is the dispersment report for October 2017. Gary and Sarah will tell us about that.
Sarah will.
Thank you. Major expenditures for October came in at $3,417,748. Major expenditures came up with 94% of those. Payroll coming in at $1,7,582. You'll notice that there's fairly significant purchases in October and a lot of them are in capital outlay for about five of them. So we purchased the playground equipment for Indian Hills. That was about $97,890. A generator for the water department treatment facility, $92,579. A payment for the Southwest trunk line Phase 5 project, that was $108,537. Six Street realignment project, $313,431. And then for our booster station Phase 1, a payment went out of $140,609. We also paid our quarterly payment for our dispatch services through Whitcom, $132,367. And we made our annual ICREM payment and that was $244,933. So that's our significant purchases.
I just had a question about ICREM.
Sure.
Because I know that when we, the last council meeting, we were talking about our rating and stuff. Do we get yearly updates on how we're doing so that keeps our? Because I remember when I first came on council, we had to do those webinars and things like that and that made a difference too.
The ICREM has a program that we can, they will reduce our premium by 5% if we all participate in the upgrade. We also have state insurance fund which also returns us part of our premium depending on our experience of workplace injuries. So we try to keep monitor all those insurance programs.
Well, I had wondered because I had only done it when I was first elected and I wondered if I needed to do it yearly.
Actually, you do. Council should have, all got emails on that. If you haven't, we will find out.
I remember doing something pretty recently.
Yeah. Watching the webinars.
We did.
Okay, we'll have a, Lori will remind you.
I could be reminded. That would be great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Anybody else have any comments on this?
I did have a question. If you would let me know why the art fund is at a negative balance, please.
So the art fund isn't actually at a negative balance. It's showing that on here because we've merged arts into the Parks and Rec Fund. So those monies are now sitting in the Parks and Rec portion and so in order for us to move the investments, we had to do the transfer which then creates a negative on the report, though it's not negative.
If I can clarify that too. That is not to say that arts funds are under the management of the Parks and Rec administration. We just put them together in our fund accounting scheme.
And they still belong to the arts?
Yes, they do. They still belong to arts. Arts is just now under a new umbrella.
Awesome.
So how will that show up? How will that show up on the reporting in the future?
We can do something with that. It shouldn't be an issue.
No, we probably can do an all encompassing fund, kind of like we do for, is it Parks and, what's the new title now? I'm drawing a blank.
Community events.
Okay. So we could probably do a title underneath that to where it would fall under that and you'll just know that that's where it's at. And we can put, until people learn, we can put a parentheses saying what's all in it.
And in the annual appropriation budget, we had combined that and advised the council at that time as well. So we're just catching up with our bookkeeping.
Yes. And in 18 is actually when that comes effective and so that's why, since this is still 17, you're seeing that negative because this is when we had to make the move. So 18, everything will adjust to what the budget shows.
Awesome. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, and on the dispersment report, just for transparency in the meeting here, we've got a couple of void checks. One of them's for $118,000 proportion.
Yeah, so the $118,000 was actually for URA. Those funds were not supposed to be deposited within the cities and so we had to make that journal entry to move it to where it needed to be. And unfortunately, you can see every transaction, so it's, it looks like there's a negative, but it was just a misplacement of the funds.
For further explanation, as council knows, the city provides administrative and accounting services to the urban renewal agency. So those funds are accounted for downstairs due to an oversight. It was just deposited in the wrong account, caught immediately and the transfer was made.
Yep.
And the one for the streets, the $939, not that that's terribly material, but what happened there?
You know, without looking, I don't know what that one would be. What, I mean, it could be a misapplied deposit. It could be, I mean, there's so many things that that could be. I don't know for sure, but I can find out.
Okay. Just out of curiosity.
Sure.
To know that. Anybody else have anything on the dispersment report for last month?
Nope.
No.
Proceed to sign that then.
Need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're gonna have to change the names here.
Just scratch out the names that don't apply. We appreciate the council or committee members filling in for their absent counterparts.
See if you can spell that last name. You rocked it. Almost like you're Italian.
Your name's the only correct one here. Don't have to print yours.
No, that one's printed.
We'll just circle it. Make it stand out like your own. Okay. There you are.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Gary has pen back.
Yeah. It's a nice pen. I'm sure he doesn't want me to have it.
That's why I used it.
The property of the city.
It's the right one.
Okay, the third item on today's agenda is a public meeting for the Idaho Community Development Block Grant request. And Lisa Anderson's gonna fill us in on the details and Mr. Lambert and Mr. Lilly rushed the table but then retreated. So I don't know what that's about.
It's not good.
It's okay, Kevin, if you want to sit up here, don't be afraid.
Good afternoon. Today we're having actually a public hearing that will actually need the chair of the meeting to call to order. We are submitting a grant application as we presented to the city council last Monday for a new fire engine under the public facilities category for the Idaho Community Development Block Grant. And today we're here to allow the public to ask questions about our request and to look at the handbook regarding the application. And I can provide any additional information regarding the request. We're still looking at some finer details of how we will do the match and procurement, which will be set up if we are funded, but we still have to detail a few couple, a few of the items today, or I mean, excuse me, later in the week as we meet with and talk to Department of Commerce staff if they were unavailable last week to answer questions. I apologize.
Okay, so it seems pretty straightforward and we've seen this before. What we're trying to do is apply for a grant to get enough money to buy a new fire truck, which is something we gotta do anyway, so can't see any reason why we shouldn't try to get some funding from the block grant. Anybody else have anything to add?
The uniqueness of this for our committee here is the fact that we could not wait until a council meeting on this because it would have been a past date. We've got to move forward with this now so that we can get this in in a timely fashion. So that's why we are having this public meeting today.
Kathryn?
My question just has to do about procurement. And I understand the matching, but if you could just go into a little more detail about that?
Yes. There's a national consortium that bids out fire engines because they're kind of a unique, special type of piece of equipment for fire departments. So there's a national consortium in Texas that does a bidding process that cities are allowed to piggyback on. And it wasn't until the last two or three years that actually federal and state grant funds were eligible to participate in that procurement process. They are going to be redoing an update of all of their bids in January. And so we're still looking at that prices might increase after the first of the year and I've still gotta make a couple of phone calls and speak with the fleet manager, Rick, who is here today about that process. And so we'll be updating that part of our application later in the week after we can define whether or not we would still be able to get the pricing on an existing engine that we have in purchase right now that has been presented to you previously, or if there will be new rates that we'll need to apply for. And if so, then we need to factor that information into our request.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, if nobody at the table has anything further, I guess I would call the public meeting to order and anyone from the public that wants to comment or present input or have questions on this Community Development Block Grant would be welcome to come to the table and voice your concerns or ask questions.
We also have a sign in sheet that if everyone here today, if you haven't signed it yet, we'll pass it around additionally to sign in.
That'd be great.
If I may, and this is the first public hearing of two public hearings in this block grant process, correct?
Correct. If we were to be awarded, we would need to hold another public hearing at what they call a 50%, if you were in construction, at a 50% completion. Or let's say if we were awarded this funding and the engine is probably, it takes about a year to build them as I understand, and they will provide an opportunity for staff to go in and do a onsite visit of the, I don't want to say construct, of the facility where the engine is being built at that point in time, then we would update the public on the status of the project.
And at that time, we'd know more about the match that might be required and after we were awarded, we would know.
Yes, actually, we will have to determine that before we submit the application later this week. I didn't, with the short week last week, we, I just found out Thursday about the update of the consortium bidding, so Tyler may have an update for us on that, but we'll have to.
Excuse me, are you gonna be speaking as a member of the public or as staff?
Staff.
Okay.
Ladies and gentlemen?
So just, just a quick update on a few of those things. So February is when we do anticipate price increase. You know, generally those aren't terribly drastic, probably somewhere in the 2% to 4% is typically what we see with vehicles, but that, that is what we anticipate to see in February. And as Lisa mentioned, when, when we order the truck, actually Rick and a few representatives from the fire department will go down and they just, they just completed this meeting in February at the factory where they go through pre-build on the truck. And so then they'll go through the entire specification with the representatives that are gonna be building the truck and go through the build process.
Is this the La France?
No, this, this is, this is.
Rick, I'm drawing a blank.
Houston Gallowston.
It's Pierce. Yeah, Pierce is the.
The builder?
Is the builder, yeah.
Okay.
And we, it's a, it's a new, unique process because we haven't been able to do this in the past and fire engines weren't always available under the Idaho Community Development Block Grant.
Right.
And so it's a new process. There's only been, I think, three other engines funded in the state and one of them went through the, the process, but in conversations with Department of Commerce last week there have reviewed this and they were actually glad to see that the consortium was going out for new updated bids prior to them making an award. So what might be unique for us in this situation is, is that they give us an opportunity to update our application prior to going to the Economic Development Council in March or April. And so if we do see a large price increase, they would give us an opportunity to possibly update our request. But I'm hoping, I'm in working with Rick and Tyler this week, that we'll be able to get a better idea of what we think that price will be and then we'll determine what our matching funds were. We already have enough funding in the budget to offer at least 50% match, but at this time, we would prefer not to if we don't have to and be able to use that toward an additional fire department vehicle because we have more that are coming into the obsolete category. And so this may be the first of one or two applications that we would request through the Department of Commerce for this type of project.
Gina?
Clarify the match for me again. We have a certain percentage that we are, and we know what that is going in or not?
We're going, I, I need to fine tune that with Tyler and Rick later in this, later in the week. Department of Commerce allows you to put up a 10% match is the minimum that's required on this project. However, another unique situation would be that normally they allow 20, or excuse me, 10% for grant administration, which would be $50,000 on a $500,000 application. But because I'm a certified grant administrator, the city is able to use that for in-kind match. Normally, cities and counties procure for administration services and then have to pay for those, but we're allowed to use that as match also for this project.
Okay, Mr. Redden?
We also budgeted funds, as you know, in this year's appropriations budget for half of the purchase price of a $520,000 fire engine, I believe. So we have funds accumulated that could be utilized as match to make us more competitive. But of course, as we move along, we'll determine what is the best, I guess, ratio that puts us in the most competitive advantage and then move ahead with that.
I have a question. So that's kind of where I was thinking, did it make us change our mind on which fire truck? Because I know that in the, it's the same, same order.
We're using the same specification.
Okay. We're not going for the bigger, the latter?
We have.
We're not rearranging because of the opportunity.
We have three engines and one ladder truck. The ladder truck will be the final one in the fleet that's replaced. I believe it was 2026 was the scheduled time for replacement of that vehicle.
That was just the big one. Yeah. Thanks.
Any further comments from the table or from the public?
Just to clarify, the public hearing is still open.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Public, that's why I was asking for that before I closed the public hearing. We don't know who you are, but you could say who you are.
Joanna Manita, 203 South Howard. I'm just talking about the, the funding. If there's money in the budget to buy the truck and you get the grant, what happens to the money in the budget?
We have a schedule that we put together in our long range financial plan for replacement of these engines and, or fire apparatus. And the funds, if we do get the grant and we're able to use some of those funds as match, then the funds that are left will just merely stay in there to accumulate for the purchase of the next one.
Let's see. And you're still figuring out the amount of the match, but it will come from that in the budget.
Yes. That's the anticipation.
Yes, we would not exceed the amount that is already budgeted in the FY '18 budget. And this would be, these funds are approved late April, early May of 2018. You have two years to complete your project. However, as we previously said, it takes about a year to build one of these engines. So you have to do progress payments on them or you get discounts based upon how much you put down upfront, that type of thing. So there's, there's a little bit of negotiation room in the very beginning to see, you know, depending upon what your budget is available and if we have grant funds and how much would, if we were awarded, how much would be released at certain levels could possibly help in reducing the price of the engine.
Okay, that's all good information. Thank you for your comment. Anyone else from the public like to speak on them?
No, question? Can I stay here?
No, you have to come up.
No, you must come up here.
So Brandy Sullivan?
Can't start talking until you get to the mic.
Hey. Brandy Sullivan, 121 North Polk. I was curious with the, it talks about the funds benefiting low and moderate income persons. I'm assuming that's a requirement to get the block grant or, and, and I'm just curious what that would be.
What that means?
Is it just benefits the same way it benefits everyone in the community or?
Okay. So at the last, at the 2010 census and just a little bit of history on that, the way the census is done has changed a little bit since 2010 and now they're using the American Community Survey. So low to moderate income definitions have changed a little bit, but when the Department of Commerce received their data for the 2010 census, the city of Moscow was 53.65% low to moderate income. And in order to qualify for public facilities grant, under that national objective of low to moderate income, you have to be at least 51%. And so that opened the door for the city of Moscow to be eligible for these types of funds. At that point in time, our, they counted our population, I think, was at 19,705 and a little over 10, I think it's 10,250 persons were at low to moderate income at that point, which gave us that 53.65%. The prior 10 years, Moscow was not eligible in the prior census from 2000 to 2010, we were at like 40, no, 50, we weren't quite 51. It was just right under and they don't, they don't round up and so we weren't eligible. And so we're taking advantage of these, of these funds now under that.
And that's a typical demographic for college towns where the university has a large presence.
And I will note too, that in our public hearing notice and in our presentation to city council last week, we did say that we would apply for up to $500,000. And in my discussions with the staffing at Department of Commerce last week, they have other larger projects coming in, some of them which are applying for public facilities that have their water facilities that are currently under mandatory restrictions. And so it will be a competitive round and in order for us to make our application as competitive as possible, I'm still kind of weighing out the options and we'll speak with Gary and go over that before we submit our final budget. I'm hoping to set up a conference call tomorrow for that. But we will, we will definitely do the best we can for the city and move forward there. But I wanted to make sure that I had approval to ask for up to the maximum amount.
Right.
Okay.
Any further public comment on this issue? If not, I will close the public hearing at this point and we'll talk amongst ourselves about how we're gonna proceed here, which I assume is gonna be to forward this to.
Actually, city council approved the application at the last council meeting. This was just something that was required under the grant. So now that the public hearing has been conducted, we will proceed with submitting the grant, which is due on Friday. So with that pre-authorization from council, we will then bring a report back to council at the next council meeting. Okay?
Right on. And if anyone has not signed the sheet, I'm going to continue to pass this around. If everyone here could please sign. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Lisa? Okay, moving right along. Item number four on today's agenda is the Idaho Office of Highway Safety 2018 Traffic Enforcement Mobilization Program. Elise is back with that as well.
Whoops, excuse me. And I also have, I think, three, three gentlemen from the police department here. We have Chief Frye and two of our officers. I'm gonna go ahead and go over the, the grant application part of it and a couple of statistics and then I'll step back and let them kind of talk to you about their program. What you have before you today is the annual contract that we need to sign in order to participate in the mobilization processes or mobilization efforts that the Office of Highway Safety through the Idaho Transportation Department. And this year, as you'll see in, in the second page of your packet, they've cut back a little bit on the number of mobilizations that they're offering. And that is because they are now offering mini-grants for specific mobilizations and actually works to our benefit because some of them that they had offered in the past were for the holiday season and that's when our population is the lowest, we have the least amount of drivers, that type of thing. So with the new mini-grants that are available under a similar type of funding, just a new process, the police department can kind of define a timeframe and a specific type of mobilization that they would like to do and for a certain period of time. And so we will use those opportunities to kind of mold mobilizations that would best benefit our community based upon the student population and different events, the Mardi Gras, different times of year when we really want people to be more careful and be safe. And so today before you, we have the mobilization agreement and it's called Traffic Enforcement Mobilization Agreement. Our language in the grant world for this and with officers is the TIMA. And it requires council approval and then the mayor to sign on this document. And it also has the certifications and assurances in there, which is our typical civil rights requirements that we have done. I think we're probably in our 16th year of this process. It just became an online process just over the last three years and so we've presented you with, I think, documents that are a little more formal. And under a different scenario this year, what I wanted to do for the police department and also to save time on paperwork and many other things is, last year we had approximately, I think it was 30, about 23,000 in just mobilizations, or excuse me, we had about 41,000. It was 41,744 to be exact in mobilizations. And we wanted to be able to move forward without having to bring each of the mini-grant applications before you this year for a special mobilization. We can do reports, but not having to bring different agreements and different, different statistics to you each and every time we have a mobilization under a mini-grant. So this would allow the police department to apply for up to $50,000 in mobilizations before they would need to come forth to you again. Now, that doesn't mean that we can't do reports, special reports regarding certain things. And the police department is very good about issuing public notices and press releases for the different mobilizations, but this will just be a more streamlined process so that we don't have to come forth to committee and council every time we want to do a mini-grant mobilization because they've cut back on, on the process of what you're approved to do in the upfront paperwork.
The idea is to try and, as Elise said, streamline the process.
We've done the same thing in a couple of different processes. One of those is declaring property surplus. You delegated that authority to the city supervisor to declare property surplus. We used to have to bring lists of that into the council every quarter to have the council vote on it and send it out. Council delegated that. We also are doing a similar process in our task order process for master design or engineering agreements. In fact, you'll see one of those at the end of the agenda today where it's a task order that comes forward under a master agreement as tasks are identified. Those are identified by the engineering department. Public Works Director brings those forward and I sign those and then they go out and they're binding contracts. So this is the same process, just trying to keep it as simple as possible.
Just a note, 2016 versus 2017, I just did a quick calculation on our paperwork. In 2016, we had $23,936 in overtime reimbursement from the mobilizations. In 2017, we had $41,744 in overtime reimbursement. And some of that was also for equipment. It would be reimbursed for overtime hours or mileage, those types of things, and then we can purchase equipment. The police department spent 796 hours working on these mobilizations last year.
So are we completely through with the mobilizations for this year, since there's a month and change left in the year or is there gonna be any more?
The first one, and they'll talk to you about that, is coming up in December.
Okay.
So for my part of this, I just needed to have approval to move forward with the contract or the TIMA agreement and approval of the certifications and assurances and then have it move forward to council.
And we can do that in a motion together.
You should listen to the presentations first since that's what you're voting on.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
But then you can tie them together?
Yes.
Okay, so I will step down and leave the microphone and chairs to the police officers. Thank you.
Chief Frye and his crew come up and.
I'll let them sit.
Tell us what's up.
Just grab a chair from the engine.
I was gonna say, bring another chair.
So first of all, I'd like to introduce Jay Waters. Jay is our current traffic officer right now and he is leaving the position in January and Officer Thuson is our new traffic officer, so he'll, he'll be seeing him in the future on these things. What these mobilizations give us, opportunity to do is our shop, or I mean, our cops on a bus.
Yeah.
The distracted driving, different programs that we feel that we need to step in and try to educate the community on. And this just streamlines the process for us to be able to set those up at times when we believe that they're most beneficial to us.
Liz?
The list is here. Would you like to, just to go a little further and go through? Would you like to, just to go a little further and go through the list?
Actually, I'll let these guys go through it because they are the ones that, they're the ones implementing the process.
Yeah, it's interesting to hear, you know, what you've chosen and why.
Well, the, the Idaho Transportation Department, they distribute a list of planned emphasis patrols throughout the course of the fiscal year. In the past, there's typically been between nine to 11 separate mobilizations. Of course, all of them taking place over holidays or Independence Day or summertime. And as Elisa alluded to earlier, most of them were the most inopportune times for us as a college town because that's when all the students are gone. They have since removed all the distracted driving emphasis patrols. They now just have it down to just some impaired and a couple of seatbelt, if I'm not mistaken. Those are set in stone, the dates, the times, everything like that. Anything that we do above and beyond that, we can set up through a mini-grant where we make an application through the, the transportation department. We set it up for whatever dates and times that we want, how many officers we want, how many hours we want, everything. Then once we get all the paperwork done and we get it approved through you, then we will perform the mobilization and then we get reimbursed that money with a 25% match is what this city would be responsible for. Like I said, in the, for instance, for fiscal year 2017, the ITD, the transportation department, they put out 10 mobilizations. We participated in all of them as well as one that we designed ourselves to take place over Mom's Weekend. And that was, that was, that was a focus on distracted driving. And then, as you can see, they've dropped that down to five this year. So, that's where we're asking for the ability to do the mini-grants to make up the difference to the ones that they're not actually establishing themselves. They give us a little more freedom to, to, like I said, to determine the times, dates. And then as far as the match and just to elaborate on the match a little bit, the match can be met with funds or mileage too. So, we utilize our mileage when we do the grants or when we do the enforcements, that, that mileage will go towards our match as well, so. In addition, any, any grants that we plan and implement ourselves, all of our, all of our time spent planning, what we would earn in wages during that time can also be used towards match as well.
Just kind of curious, since we are so close to WSU, is there any coordination with Washington on the times that you do the mobilizations?
I haven't, I haven't, in my three years, I haven't broached the subject of trying to go across state lines with the mobilization. The two that I have planned myself, I, I coordinated with ISP and Leittau County as those are our two most direct liaison, you know, departments that we share space with. And both, both of those efforts were, I thought, were highly successful and I, and I thought it developed a lot of camaraderie, communication between the departments. And to be quite frankly, we had, we had a lot of fun.
So, the reason I'm asking that is because usually if we have moms or dads, we can hear with, it's alternating with them and I would suspect they have mobilizations as well and just kind of curious if there had been any coordination.
Well, and regardless of whether we decide to, to coordinate with the agencies over there, we can still hold them over their scheduled weekends, their scheduled events. It's not dependent upon us working with them. Like for instance, I believe last weekend was Mom's Weekend for WSU?
Dad's Weekend.
Dad's Weekend. We, we could have planned our own emphasis for that just because there would have been so much traffic over here in Moscow. So, we can do that.
Yeah. So, the five that are listed here are the ones that, you can do others, but these are the ones that you've been doing for the past 16 years with it?
These are the ones that are, that are published and supported through the Idaho Transportation Department. They are going to occur regardless. It just depends on whether we want to participate in them or not. What the 50,000 will allow us to do is to create our own, basically. So, that'll be those mini-grants that we say, we want to do this emphasis at this time that's not designated by ITD.
Okay.
For instance, if I can, for instance, Dad's Weekend or something, if we want to say we'd like to have an extra two officers on the street that night working specifically looking for DUIs or whatever it may be, or if we wanted to do a grant where we have officers up on campus looking for underage drinking, or if we want to do something similar to Officer Waters did with the, on the bus, we can, we can kind of put those down to what days work best.
And in addition to that, we also learned from ITD that we can apply for an open grant
to encompass the entire year. Yes. It doesn't have to be over a couple of days or maybe even a week. We can, we can put in for a grant for, for instance, say for distracted driving to occur over the course of the entire year. And he would just divide it up into this weekend and this weekend and this. So, we would only have to come to you once in order to conduct an emphasis over the course of an entire year. So, go ahead.
Well, just, just out of curiosity, have you found that you normally report quarterly on these things at council or have you normally come to committee? Because I don't remember.
Typically, they come to council and committee and they go through like a regular grant process.
Even for reporting? Just for reporting, they give all the statistics and?
That comes out in the police annual report.
Okay. So, there's never a presentation?
Typically not. We certainly do that.
We did one last year. Okay. Just trying to make sure I'm putting all my puzzle pieces together. Yeah. Thank you.
Okay. If there's nothing further, I would go ahead and recommend that we advance this to council on the consent agenda since we've been doing it for 16 years. It's pretty much regular business. Thank you, gentlemen, for your effort.
Thank you.
Okay. Item number five on today's agenda is Third Street Bridge Task Order Agreement for Design and Construction Management. Kevin's charged the table to tell us all about it.
Wow.
Thank you. Well, last September, this past September, we put out a request for qualifications for a design firm to perform the design and construction inspection on, on our Third Street Bridge project. We selected Keller Associates. There were five folks, or five firms that submitted their qualifications. We, we selected Keller. They, we negotiated a, a task order agreement for surveying, which they have already begun on. And this task order agreement number four here that you have today is for design and for construction inspection. So, it's in the amount of $122,000, $122,880. About half of that is designed and about half of that is for construction inspection. We're hoping actually to reduce the amount needed for construction inspection and supplement with our own forces. We're going to have to see how that goes with our other responsibilities, but we're trying to keep this as low cost as possible and within budget. So, this agreement would complete the design by late spring, I believe, for bidding and construction during low water this coming summer.
Earlier today, Councilman Steed sent a message to Mr. McDonald, who I see is here, and I wonder if he could address the concerns about the, the cost there, just for the record, so what he might think about why this is, this project seems to be somewhat more expensive than comparable ones we're seeing in the county.
Good afternoon. The, yeah, the email, and I did actually just respond to the company area, but a couple of things within that. One of the, one of the items he mentioned in the email was that he thought that it was stated in the conversation last week at Transportation Commission that the $580,000 budget included the corridor work and that is not the case. It is just the bridge. So, first clarification. Excuse me. The other item that's in there, he talked about using a precast concrete arch and having the supplier provide all the design services for that, similar to what was constructed by the North Leittau County Highway District up in Viola a couple of years ago. That is one of the bridge types that we are considering. One of the items for tasks within this task order is an assessment of available bridge types to determine which is the most viable in this location, whether it's based on cost, impacts, you know, environmental impacts in terms of what we, what we are constructing around the creek, availability, those types of things, floodplain management, all of that. It may very well be that a precast bridge is that one that we end up with or there are other options. But the thing to keep in mind is that a precast bridge supplier, typically they will provide the design for the substructure. That's the foundations, the arch, the wing walls leading into it. They do not normally provide the superstructure construction or design. That would be the road, the sidewalks, the guardrails, the handrails, the approaches, all those kind of things. So, the intent here is to start with an assessment and then depending on which type we end up with, there will be a design services piece that we will need to perform through our consultant to then complete the overall design and get it ready for, for advertisement.
Okay. Thank you for addressing that.
And I have to say to Les, he also, at the Transportation Commission meeting, went into great detail actually about the corridor and the process of the bridge and that it was a separate entity to what, what was the bridge. So, yeah.
Yeah. It seems to me it's a much more because of how deep it is into the floodplain and how much of the city is behind the bridge that could be flooded, if you will. And if it did caught, if you put in a structure that does back up water, it's going to have more effect there than it would say out on the other end of Mountain View. So, there may be a little more engineering has to go along with that.
As part of it, they are doing a hydraulic assessment of the channel to make sure that we do not create adverse conditions for floodwater or flood situations. We have to have a certain amount of clearance between the Hundred Year Flood and the base of the bridge and make sure that we're not causing a rise in the overall water levels. And so, that's part of, part of this as well, that hydraulic modeling and hydraulic assessment to then so help us select the appropriate bridge type.
Yeah. I think we definitely don't want to create something that backs up water in people's houses.
Exactly.
I want to go back to Kevin's statement earlier, if I can, please. Tell me how, you mentioned something about cutting costs somehow through this process. Will you help a non-engineer understand that, please?
Yes. Depending on the type of structure that, that we end up with, what we'd like to do is, this agreement is on a time and materials basis. So, we, we tell them, we don't need you for this, we don't get built for that.
Awesome.
So, that as much as possible of the inspection work, we're going to try to do that and say, let's look at these things, I think we can handle this, this and this. We need you here on Tuesday for this.
Perfect.
Just to keep, this is kind of a all-inclusive, well, it's still part-time on their part, but we're hoping to minimize the cash output.
Okay. That sounds great.
Oh, I see. One other thing.
Please, please.
Related to the cost as a percent of the project, I believe Walter is normally looking at 20 to 25% and that was his concern, but this is, you know, a bridge project, a significant portion of their work is going to be the hydrologic and hydraulic study, which we wouldn't have on a roadway project. So, it's quite a detailed analysis and they end up with a water surface level for given return period of storm in order to set the bridge at a height that the water would be able to pass.
So, a minor thing that I noticed is that the, as you go through the line item thing and the project meetings, the first meeting is cost is billed at, would be billed at $1,505 and then the pre-construction meeting is $1,540. I wonder why? Do they have better snacks at the?
I think there was, it was a thing about licorice and after dinner.
I wonder how they arbitrarily assign the numbers to the cost of a meeting.
I don't know that. Could be different staff attending the meeting.
Yes, I was going to think staff.
Yeah, and some of those are quite detailed.
Licorice.
Totally licorice.
Okay. That's all.
Right on.
No further questions, Your Honor?
What is the committee's pleasure?
I think we should move forward and put this on the regular agenda. This is, this is a project that's attracted considerable public attention and I think it should be on the regular agenda and televised again, so.
Thoughts exactly. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Thanks.
Okay. All right. If there's no, no further business anybody wants to bring forward, I would entertain a motion to adjourn today's Public Works and Finance meeting.
So moved.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.
Thank you.